And some of the changes that have happened with Gatsby 95. And just give you a quick overview of some of the key terms with that. So. So first things first, the effective date thanks to Gatsby 95 is now for reporting periods beginning after June 15th, 2021. That gives those calendar year entities until 2022 to implement that standard. Earlier adoption is available to those who want to adopt early. So any of you who really are gung ho on Gatsby 87, feel free to get going on that. So the first thing that we need to know when approaching Gatsby 87 is what is a lease? So we have a definition in the guidance, which is a contract that conveys control of the right to use asset or the right to use another entity's non-financial asset, which is the underlying asset as specified in the contract for a period of time in an exchange or an exchange like transaction. So let's go over some of those key terms. First thing is going to be the contract. This deals with the legal enforceability. It doesn't have to be written, but most of the time it will be in order to evident the legal rights and obligation of all the parties. The control of the right to use. The lease gives someone the right to use an asset, not the asset itself, because not all of the benefits and burdens of ownership are transferred. And contracts that transfer ownership should be reported as a financed purchase or sale of the underlying asset. So those contracts are not leases. So you have that asset versus that right to use the asset. It also has a carve out for the non-financial assets. The qualifier was added to scope out things like securities lending or other things like that, which might otherwise meet that definition, but they were never intended to be covered by the Gatsby 87 standard. And then finally, the exchange or exchange like transaction. And this part stipulates that there has to be an equal or almost equal like transaction between the parties. So rentals with nominal rent payments, so those rent agreements that are like a dollar for the entire year, those are not going to meet the definition of a lease and would not be subject to the standard. Similar to those short term leases as well, anything under a year would also not meet the standard. So let's take a look at both sides, the lessy and the lessor model. So first, the lessor model. So there's five kind of components that can make up your entries for the lessy model. First is going to be a lease liability, and that's measured at the present value of lease payments expected to be made during the lease term. You have a right to use asset, which is the lease liability, plus any lease payments to the lesser at or before the commencement of the lease term, less any lease incentives, and then plus any direct cost to place that lease into service. You also could have lease expense. This is a more, it's not as a common a thing in the Gatsby side of the language, but if there was a separate component of the lease that represents a lease expense, and this would be something like a mileage overage on a lease of a vehicle or something like that, that would be considered a lease expense. You also have an interest expense. So this is calculated as amortization of a discount on the lease liability. And finally, you have the amortization expense. So this is going to be your systematic and rationally decided expense, and it will be over the shorter of the lease term or the useful life of the underlying asset. You can combine that amortization expense within depreciation expense for your reporting purposes. If a lease contains a purchase option that the lessy determines is reasonably certain to be exercised, the useful life of the assets is what you would want to use. So now we move on to the other side of the transaction, the lessor model. So Gatsby 87 does change things for the lessor, while the FASB new guidance largely left the lesser piece alone. So the Gatsby was concerned with the symmetry between the lessy and the lesser models and believed that there was some room for improvement in the guidance. So how does the foundational principle apply to lessors? The lesser is deemed to have financed the giving up of that right to use asset. Therefore, a lesser is going to recognize a lease receivable and a corresponding deferred outflow of resources. There will be both lease revenue and interest revenue. Remember, it's financing. So this revenue will have to be recognized throughout the term of the lease. And also, the underlying asset will not be derecognized. So you will still have an asset on your books for that underlying lease. So what does this mean for municipalities? Well, first off, you're going to have additional liabilities and assets on the books. You will probably need to create some new accounts for this or change your existing account to align with these. If you're in a decentralized organization, there are probably going to be departments that have been entering into lease transactions that finance isn't aware of. So it's crucial that you start working to gather all those lease agreements and store them in one centralized location for whoever is going to be implementing the standard. And then finally, you will need to define for your organization what is reasonably certain. And it's when it comes to those lease agreements and making sure that is defined and standardized across the entity. So when those lease agreements ask you if this lease is going to continue, if you're going to go ahead and use those remaining lives down the road, you will need to define if it's reasonably certain that you will continue on with this lease. So how does an entity know that you have found all the leases? So this goes into that concept of completeness. And like I discussed in the last slide, consulting all your departments who have the ability to enter into a lease is probably going to be your first step and the ability to centralize all those. You also probably wanted to do a detailed review of your GL accounts that could possibly have lease or lease type payments. So if you have an account that has payments that are being made systematically, so maybe on a monthly basis, you'll want to dig in a little deeper onto those payments to see what exactly those are and whether or not they meet that standard of a lease. Another way you can do it is talk to your purchasing and legal department. A lot of times, they've had to review these leases. So they may have some firsthand knowledge of who has some leases. Maybe there's a department that they talked to on a one-time basis that you didn't even consider would have leases that you can talk to and make sure that you're getting all those leases. And then finally, getting those lease agreements and looking to see if there's any service components or other embedded leases within the lease agreements. So that's really all I'm going to talk about as far as the lease standard itself goes. I did want to mention a couple of BKD thoughtwares that we have out there right now. The Gatsby lease implementation updates. So after the Gatsby 95 was passed, we have a webinar with that. And then the really, the one specific for municipalities that goes through some examples of different lease transactions and things like that is the breaking down implementation. So if you do have some time or if you need some more understanding on the Gatsby 88, or I'm sorry, Gatsby 87, this would be a really good spot for you to go. So with that, we'll go ahead and get into the lease vision demonstration. So BKD has developed what we're calling our lease vision solution. So we've got three kind of steps to it, and it's, we've taken like a menu approach to it. So you can purchase one thing or another thing. It doesn't have to be all inclusive. You can decide what you want to have. So we have an AI powered software. We call it Kira, and I'll put up a kind of prints, an example extraction of what that would look like. So this is an LLC agreement. That's the example they have in Kira. But so you can see that it'll give you the terms and things out to the side and then actually pulls out in the agreement or the lease agreement or whatever you put in there to actually give you exactly what is in the lease. Now, Kira is not perfect. So there is an element of human, you know, we have to look at a review that would go into place to make sure that what's getting pulled out of those leases is actually what is in those leases. The next thing we have is a roadmap. And I'll pull that one over as well. So the roadmap is basically what we call a white pages on steroids or a Cliff Note on steroids. So it's 37 pages and it goes into the guidance and it gives you some understanding of maybe how you should go about implementing Gatsby 87. So here on the table of context, you see, it talks about your education, determining scopes and things like that. In phase two, finding those leases, it gives you some more ideas of how to do those completeness things we were just talking about. Phase three, how to develop some new internal policies around leases. And then phase four, actually generating your journal entries. So I'll go up to some pages here. And you can just kind of see that we've got some example journal entry here. So in different examples and things like that. So it's just a good tool to have to kind of understand the standard a little better and get a better idea of if I have this type of lease, what would my journal entry look like? That's the roadmap. And then the end all be all here is our Excel based calculation tool. So I'll just go ahead and jump right into that. So I'm gonna have the lessy version up here first. So right now, we have a lessy and a lessor version. That's just because it, there's a little bit of difference in accounting for the lessy and the lessor side. So we went ahead and created two tools associated with that. First, I'm going to go through the lessy version, because I think that's probably what most people are going to be looking for. So this first page here we have is just a copyright tab. And this just talks about that we're wanting you to use this strictly for your own entity. You can make as many copies as you would like within your own entity, but we just ask that you don't share it outside of that entity. With the extension of time for, with Gatsby 95, we are developing some new updates to the tool. So right now, this is still from the June 1st, 2019, when we initially developed the tool. But we are working, since we do have that additional time, on some upgrades that we've seen other clients needed with the tool. So those are in process. Also, once we give you the tool, it is yours to use. If it does break, we're happy to help, but it is your own tool. You will be responsible for updating it and things like that. We don't have any support agreements or anything like that. Once you purchase it, it's yours to keep and use. If you were a client or became a client, we do have a separate independence checklist that would need to be filled out. So just to maintain that independence and make sure that you would be making all of management and operating decisions. So the next tab I'm going to talk about is the instruction tab. And I won't go into this too in depth, because we're going to talk about each of these tabs individually. But this, this goes into just kind of the first overview of the tool. And then it goes into each tab itself and talks to you a little bit about how that tab works and what is expected to be filled out within that tab. But I'll go down here to the bottom and we'll talk a little bit about best practices for the tool. So we do suggest that you save one master copy that is a clean copy that nothing has been inputted in. This is again, just in case something does happen to break in the tool, you will have that clean copy that you can go back to and use. We also suggest that you could use this workbook for, to log all those short term leases and other leases that weren't actually leases or included in the standard so that you could say that, hey, I did look at these leases. I considered them and they were not a part of the standard. So you could keep those all compiled in one place. Throughout the workbook, we make it very easy to print or print to PDF so that you can attach those to any documentation that you need to have for those entries. So we tried to, we tried to make every page printable. The only one that is not is going to be the contract components tab, which is kind of the main input tab. We do suggest that every few years that you would archive the workbook you're working on and then start a new one. That's just to clear out all those old leases that aren't in effect anymore and just make sure that the workbook is running as well as possible. And finally, the tool is limited to 100 leases per workbook. That doesn't mean that we can't do more than 100 leases. We would just have multiple workbooks in place for that. With something like that, we, if you do have more than 100, we recommend grouping them into maybe departments or a certain type of assets and things like that. So but grouping those in divisions really can help out if you have different entries to make to different accounts and different funds. So now we'll move on to the guidance tab. So right here, we have a guidance tab, and it's just a really limited guidance excerpt that gives you a couple of quick points to look at in case you were working in the workbook and said, well, what if this happened or what if this is going on? And it's got a couple of ideas here from the guidance that could help you out and you wouldn't have to actually dive into the guidance itself. So just some, just some key clauses and key phrases from the guidance in here. So now we're going to get to the real meat and potatoes of the spreadsheet. So this is our contract components tab. This is where all the leases will get inputted. You'll go through and you'll put in the lease counterparty, what assets are under contract, whether there's fiscal funding clauses and things like that, any renewals and such. You'll also put in the adoption date or in the lease termination date. And on this column, column H, the lease commencement or adoption date, if your lease was before adoption date, you'll want to put in the adoption date. So if your lease was from, say, 2017, you would still want to put in the date of your adoption. So in this example, date of adoption is 1/1/19. But if your lease didn't start until after adoption date, you would go ahead and put in the date that the lease actually started. That just helps the workbook to work properly. Throughout the workbook, there are little cell comments and little guidance sections to help you fill out each area so you can understand like what we're asking for in that area. There's also data validation. So if you put in a date that wasn't an actual date, it will let you know that you need to enter a valid date. So that's throughout the workbook as well. There's also protections throughout the workbook on anything that we aren't asking you to edit. That's again, just to make sure that our, the workbook is as protected as possible and won't, you know, do any weird breaking or anything like that. So as we scroll over, you'll see that we ask you to input the stated or implicit interest rate. As the lessy, if you don't have it, there is an alternative rate you can use, and that will be input on a separate form. You can also input your annual fixed lease payments, your monthly, whether it's monthly or annual. These are dropdown boxes, so you can pick what the frequency of the payment is, whether the payment date is on the first, at the beginning or the end, and then when the first payment date occurred for this. So, so for example, like if you had a lease that was started before, so that adoption date, you would want to put that adoption date as well. So this will calculate out your initial period fixed payment. So this will be your monthly payment here. So as you work right onto the worksheet, you also can put any fixed period percentage adjustments that you might have with this lease. Or if there's a, just a amount that is going to be changed with the lease, you could put that here as well. And then at the end of the day, if none of that is going to calculate out to what your payment stream is going to be for this lease, you can click on this box and this will allow you to actually edit the payment stream out to the right. So before you check that box, this is all protected. But once you check that box, you can actually edit into this area. So once you have that, you'll see the total reoccurring future minimum lease payments calculated here. And then you can go through and add any additional items that it might have. So if you had maybe an exercise purchase option or if you had some initial direct cost, anything like that, that's where you would input it. As you continue working left, or I'm sorry, working right, you can see that we have a section for a lease document reference number. This is a number that will, if you have an internal lease number, you could put it here and that would go throughout the spreadsheet and you could have that document reference number in each area. You could also put any additional notes that you had associated with this, with this lease. So now we have the lease all inputted, and now it's time to start calculating some entries. So first here is our initial lease calculation tab. Again, I was talking about if you don't have that implied interest, you could enter in the incremental borrowing rate if that is available to you. All of these areas that are not shaded, they come from that contract components tab. Anything that's in green would have to be filled out in this, in this tab. So the only things in this tab that would need to be filled out is that incremental borrowing rate. Or if the, it's reasonably certain that the underlying asset will transfer, this is where you would put that asset life. So it would be that asset life or the lesser of the lease life. So once you have entered those things, we can go over here. And I've already generated these amortization tables, so that's why these say true. But if I hadn't, they would say false. And you could click this, click to generate, to go ahead and generate those amortization tables. The reason we did that is we just didn't want to have 100 amortization tables if they weren't going to be used. So just in a, in a way to try and keep the workbook as fluid and working properly as possible, we went ahead and did that macro in there. And again, you'll see that lease reference number coming through. So I'll jump ahead over to the amortization table and we'll take a look at that real quick. So here is the amortization table as it's calculated. You'll see this tab is almost completely in white. So this is all generated from that contract components tab and that initial lease calculation tab. The only thing in here that you would edit would be if you terminated the lease early, you could click a yes box here, and that would go ahead and calculate that that lease had terminated early. You can also, if there was any right to use asset impairment incurred, you could put that in here as well. But those are the only two items on the amortization table that would need to be edited. So now that we've gone through the calculation and the amortization table, it's time to make some entries. So here is the initial entry. So this is going to be the entry that takes off any old balances that were on your books and puts on any new balances for your right to use asset and that lease liability. So here we'll have a couple of places where you'll input some items. So if you wanted to have this in a specific fund, you could go ahead and designate that here. And that's just more for your reference if you wanted to have that associated with a specific fund. You could put in, if you had any capital lease assets on your books, any capital lease accumulated depreciation or any capital lease liability, you would input that all here. And then the workbook would calculate from that contract component and that initial lease calculation tab, your right to use asset and lease liability and whether or not you had any prepaid leases. So once that's done, we can start making our entry. So we've made this a bit of a live, we want to keep it as live as possible. So if we want to record the entry, this is a dropdown box and we would click record. That will make this fill out to the right here, that this needs, that this is an entry that needs to be recorded. So like I was talking about earlier, all these pages are very printable. They can be printed to PDF. You could put an entry date here and get that documentation ready for your records. So once you've made that entry, you can go ahead and click this over to booked, and it'll clear out that, this area for you. So this, this area right here is completely editable, so it can be made to be specific to your accounts. So right now, it's just generic terms from the standard. But if you wanted your account numbers, if you wanted something specific, a department, things like that, we could have that break, broken out and specific to you. So now we've got our initial entry, so we've got our lease liability and our right to use asset on our books. Now it's time to start making entries as we go along. Oh, and I will point out that anything in bracketed is going to be a credit. Anything that's not bracketed is going to be a debit. So that, that's throughout the spreadsheet as well. So now we're going to make our entries subsequent to the initial entry. So up here, you can put in any date and then put in any period. So we have monthly, quarterly, semi-annually and annually. So if you wanted to make your entry just once a year, you would just make that an annual payment, have your year in there. So you would see all this information that came from your contract components and your other tabs flowing through into here. And then as you work right, you'll see the only thing that really would need to be inputted is if there was asset that transferred ownership at the end of the lease term or if there was a right to use asset termination. So those would need to be inputted manually. So you can see it's calculating our interest expense, our accrued interest and our lease liability. And again, to your right, it's creating that entry for you. Again, right now, it's just kind of a generic entry, but that can be completely editable for your specific organization. And I will point out once again that that lease document reference number carries through, through all the tabs in this. And again, this is also, excuse me, PDF editable or PDF printable for your records. The next section of the workbook is going to be a lease balance summary. So one of the things in the standard is that we need to have the class of assets for each, each total for the class of assets. So the only thing that you would need to do in here would be to edit the date. So any date that you want the balance as of, that would be inputted up here. And then you would put in what major asset class these are under. So right now, I've just got some generic class one and class two entered in here. And that goes over to the right-hand side. And again, this is, this is totally editable to be used by your, your organization. So right now, you can see how it's bringing over those class one assets and those class two assets. So that's just formulas, sum if formulas to bringing them over here. Again, this is printable, so if you needed it for your records, you could go ahead and print those out. The next tab is going to be the maturity schedule tab. Again, you can change the date up here for whenever your year end was or whenever you wanted this maturity schedule for. All this information comes through from other tabs. So this one is all calculating on its own from other tabs, information. As things get filled out, you can go all the way to the bottom, and that's where your totals will be for, for each year and then those five years going forward as well. So with that, you also would have an additional disclosure. So you would need the summary of cash lease payments. So that's why we've included this tab. So if there was a difference between the lease payments for the schedule and the actual lease payments, you could put that in here to make sure that you have that information correct. This will, this, this amount is set up to go ahead and pull in this amount, but it can be manually edited as well. So that's the gist of the lessy. So we'll go ahead and grab the lessor version and talk about that for just a little bit. So the lessor version looks very similar to the lessy version. All the tabs are pretty much the same, just some, some differences within the tabs. So we have our copyright tab that we talked about, the instruction tab, the guidance, and then we go back into our contract components. So again, this is where we enter all of our leases. Again, you need to have the adoption date or if it's after the lease is entered into after the adoption date, the date of the lease. One big difference from the lessy to the lessor is that you have to have a stated or implied interest rate here. So. So the thinking there being that this lease was created by this person in some shape or form. So they should be able to get an interest rate. All the rest of this is exactly the same as the less, lessy until you go over to um, some of the additional terms. So we don't have things like that uh, buyer, if, if they were, if there was a purchase option at the end or things like that. It's just some of those items, excuse me, um, within the guidance that, that need to be filled out. So that's what's over here. And then again, you have that lease document reference number. I will point out again, all the, the information in the co, in the cell comments. So if you need help filling out those, um, that is there for you. And then again, there's some in the cells themselves as well to help you. So now we'll go over to our initial lease calculation. And as you can see, there's nothing to fill out here. You have that interest rate that has to be that implicit per the contract. So we don't have anything, any alternative rate that we could use. So now instead of um, right to use assets and lease liabilities, we have deferred inflows and lease receivables. So this spreadsheet works very similar as the amortization tables will not be created. You will have to click the, click to generate to create the amortization tables. And uh, we'll jump over to that real quick just to show you. Um, they look very similar. Here's again, if you, if the lease determinate, you could go ahead and check that box over here. Um, there is the total deferred inflow and total deferred inflows over here instead of um, those other items from the lessy version. So very similar um, to the lessy version. So then you have your initial entry. And similar to the lessy version, you're going to have to bring out those old balance, balances. But instead of capital lease liabilities and capital lease assets, you'll have any investments in the lease and then any unearned revenue from that lease. So as we move over to the right, you'll again see that deferred inflow and that lease receivable instead of um, your lease liability and right to use asset. But the work paper works exactly the same. You're able to make that entry here to the side. Um, you can click that it's booked when it's booked. And then you can print this out as needed to um, show documentation for your entries. Uh, the subsequent entry tab, again, very similar. You can put in any dates that you want to up here. Um, for when you want to make these entries. If you wanted to do a monthly entry instead, you can click that and it will recalculate that for you. And then um, the only thing that you would need to put into here is if the, uh, if there was a termination of the lease which caused the deferred in, inflow termination. Um, the last few tabs are exactly the same as um, the lease, the lessy version, just those different um, uh, classifications for the lesser. And you can see again, you can change the date to any date that you, that you need it to be. And you get those additional disclosures as needed. So with that, I think that's pretty much all I have on the, the tools. Um, I'm happy to take any questions or look at anything specific if somebody had a specific question or concern.
I don't see anything in the chat, but you feel free please to unmute yourself and/or enter things into the chat. That would be great. I see Jeremy back on.
And we are working on some things to update the tool. So this one is the old version. There's a few new things that are in the process of working to, to uh, update it. Uh, one of the things that I'm most excited about is there's hopefully going to be a, uh, an Excel that can compile all of the leases together. So if you did have over 100, we could compi, compile that into one entry. So you wouldn't have to make multiple entries from each workbook.
Questions, clarifications about how this looks, how this works, how it might be helpful? That might be good feedback, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
If anybody has any feedback.
But yeah, I mean, we've, we've been working on this for, oh, as soon as the GAZB 87 standard kind of started coming our way. So uh, we've changed it multiple times and tried to make it as, as user-friendly as possible. We, we did it in Excel specifically because we know um, most of our municipalities are going to be working in Excel. So they understand Excel. And also that maybe you just wanted, you don't want a continuing payment for a lease service. So we just give you the workbook and if you need any help with it, we're happy to be there and help. So.
Any feedback um, related to, to this program, how it could help your municipality? Things that are missing that might enhance it? We're looking for feedback. I can't see any of you, but I know who you are.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
Jeremy, the city of Lawrence has uh, been looking at several different softwares uh, related to leases. And um, we think that uh, it's definitely going to help us, you know, um, satisfy the GAZB requirements. And so any of you out there who haven't um, found a vendor or selected a vendor to uh, assist you with that, I greatly encourage you to do that.
Yeah, because what we found last time is that it, it comes a lot faster than you realize. So we got kind of lucky with it getting pushed back, not lucky for COVID, but just lucky that we didn't have to implement this, this year. Because there were still a lot of questions about what things were leases. So I think a lot of that has been cleared up now uh, with the FAQs and things like that. So yeah, if you haven't started compiling your leases, I, I highly recommend doing that.
Yeah, and some, some, in some way, right? In some fashion, at least pay attention to that requirement. I don't see any questions. I don't see anything in the chat. So I'll turn it over to Jeremy's uh, to conclude us. Unless Teresa, you want to share anything else or any other tips or, or knowledge? Um, we will, we will let everybody go on this Friday a little bit early.
Yeah, I figured I only had a little bit of time to talk about GAZB 87. So I didn't want to take too much of the time. But yeah, thank you all for, for coming and listening. And please, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Very good. Thank you, Teresa. Um, again, I apologize. I was a little delayed uh, getting here this morning. I had another meeting that you all know how it goes. So I don't bore you with that. But anyway, want to take a, a moment here and just again, thank BKD for sponsoring this session. Uh, this conference would not be possible without the generous sponsors like BKD who helped us put this on uh, at no cost to our members. So uh, everybody stay safe, follow your uh, safety protocols and we'll see you at the next session.
Uh, we will, we will have sessions next week. You all will be receiving information about those. Uh, you can expect to have some interesting topics, one of which is um, uh, how organizations are sort of assessing feasibility and making location decisions. We are going to talk, Tyler Technologies is going to be back on with us to talk about Tyler Detect, right? How to manage threat um, detection solutions. And then on Friday, come join us. Uh, we're going to have a session on why nobody wants to look at your uh, budget books, right? And how to make those look a little different. So we look forward to seeing you all next week and have a great weekend.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Teresa.